So we're going to move on to the subject of deliverance from demons or from the fear of demons. So let's begin with why many people are scared of demons and spirits. Especially, you know, if you come from Africa and some parts of the world, Asia. People are really scared of demons and there are all sorts of stories about demons, about spirits, about this, about that. Now here in Europe, you know, I go to a, you know, English majority church. There are very few people there from other, you know, of other ethnicities. And we spend very, very little time talking about demons, very little time talking about the devil. Unless it happens to be in the part of the passage, because sometimes they might take say the book of Luke, the Gospel of Luke and just, you know, teach out of the Gospel of Luke from, you know, chapter one all the way to chapter 24. But unless we come across maybe an instance where Jesus cast out a demon, nobody is going to be talking about demons. And yet there are parts of the world where that's all we talk about constantly. Our songs are about the devil. There is preoccupation with the devil. Do you know why? Because of fear. It's because we think he's so powerful. That's why we talk about him. If we thought he was insignificant, if we truly believed that he was defeated on the cross by Jesus, I think we will spend little, I mean, how many times do people go about talking about the team that was beaten in football? Or the boxer that was knocked out? No, you talk about the guy that knocked him out. But we talk about vanquished, the guy that was defeated 2,000 years ago. The Bible says that if the forces of darkness had known that Christ's crucifixion would be their downfall, they would not have suffered the kingdom of glory to be crucified. But God outsmarted them. They did what they thought would bring down the kingdom of God. They didn't know they were lifting the kingdom of God. And so Jesus defeated the devil on the cross and he cried out, "It is finished." And yet, 2,000 years later, people are scared. Constantly talking about this devil, this demon, that one, that one is a spiritual problem, that. Why? Because we haven't understood some fundamental things. First, we haven't understood the limitations that were placed on the devil right from the beginning. Even before Jesus defeated him on the cross, there were limitations placed upon him. If Satan did not have any restrictions, eh, oh, do you know that devastation that he would cause? You know, the troubles that we attribute to him, trust me, if he had opportunity, he would do far worse than that. There are limitations placed upon him. Anytime you open your Bible and you see commandments, "That shall not do this, don't do this, don't do this." What do you think is the purpose? Sometimes we think it's just about, because God is this person that is in heaven, that is holy and he just wants everybody to be holy and imposing his holiness on people. Half of these commandments are to protect you from the enemy. Because you are certain things that you do that open the door into your life. So he protected his people, for example, they utilize by giving them, for example, he gave them instructions on what to do with dead bodies. The things not to do. We know just how the devil, like they like those sort of things. So he gave instructions that you shall not do this, you shall not do that, you are not going to cut yourselves, you are not. Lots of things he gave them. And why does God give instructions to people? Because you really have the authority over your body. And it is up to you to cooperate or not cooperate with the devil. The devil can force you to do anything. That is the reality. There are people who said, "The devil made me do that." No, he didn't. God guards your free will. He protects your free will. It is guaranteed in the constitution of the Bible. Your free will, God will guard it all the way to hell. He will guard your right to choose to go to hell. The devil doesn't have that right. He can't take it away from you. The devil needs consent and cooperation. And there are things that we do which indirectly give him consent. There are not many people who will go about saying, "I'm looking to work very well with the devil today." Not many people do that. But there are so many things that we do, we tread in his territory. We go, you know the story of Achan. Achan was a man who stole some of the goods from Jericho. When Jericho fell, the Lord told them, "Look, don't touch anything from Jericho, because everything is to be dedicated to the Lord. Don't touch anything." Well, Achan decided, well, he saw some nice Babylonian dress and then he saw some other treasures and he went and took that and buried it somewhere. And because Achan did that, he brought trouble upon the whole of Israel because the next fight, the next battle that they went, which was against AI, they lost. Joshua proclaimed, he said, "Why have you troubled Israel?" You see, there are some things that it's like, it's like what Achan did, he went and took something that didn't belong to him. It wasn't just theft, it was something that was sacred. When the duke brought into his camp and caused problems for everybody. That's how it is sometimes with the devil. There are things that you go and double in. A preacher was talking about how he went to preach somewhere and just before he was, just before he was about to step on the podium, they were also, "Oh, let's come, let's pray that God will use you," etc. And then he's, so he was standing there just watching the ones who were doing their prayer and he told them that if he wasn't anointed before he got there, he's not going to get anointed within this short period of time. But then he came across another preacher who would spend hours praying and doing all sorts of things before he stepped into the pulpit. And that one sounded more spiritual. But later on, he discovered that this guy would spend hours watching horrible things on TV, hours living carelessly. No wonder he needed to psych himself up and spend so many hours. But those that are constantly dwelling in the presence of the Lord, they don't have to. If you are in his presence, if you're constantly practicing the presence of God, you don't have to. You don't have to psych yourself to meet the devil. You don't even acknowledge him. You just stay in the presence of God. That's why I said, before you even talk about the devil, learn to dwell in the secret place of the Most High. Learn to practice the awareness of the presence of God in your life and be in tune with that all the time. That will give you the strength, that will give you the confidence. So one of the reasons why people are scared is that we don't understand the limitations that God plays on the devil. Because you have a free will that limits the devil. God taught the Israelites to teach their children, to discipline their children. Why do you think God, why do you think it mattered to God so much to discipline children? And then when the children were not disciplined, do you know the term that used to be referred to children that were not disciplined? The sons of Belial. What was that all about? The sons of Belial in the Old Testament, you know how the New Testament describes as children of disobedience. Ephesians chapter 2 verse 2, children of disobedience. In other words, people who the devil has easy access to. Why does he have easy access to? Through their thinking, because of the things that they think about, because of the people they associate with, because of the things they be practicing. They are open, they are an open door. They've got an open door to the devil. He can come in whenever he wishes. So God taught the Israelites, discipline your children, teach them self-control so that they can keep the devil out. So discipline, disciplining your children, and I'm not talking about cruel discipline. I'm talking about a kind of discipline that helps your child to learn self-control, to learn to say no. Because saying no is keeping the devil away, keeping the devil at arm's length, or even further than that. So we are scared, or many people are scared of demons because they think of the devil and demons as having more power than they do. Do you know that many believers think that the devil has more power than they do? That the devil has more power than you do? You might not have thought about this consciously. But just pause and reflect. You probably think the devil has more power than you do. If you think so, you already lost the battle. You've already lost the battle. And it means that you haven't read the Bible. If you are a child of God, you have the same power that raised Jesus from the dead, residing inside of you. That power defeated Satan. So if you and the devil stand in the ring, that's a mismatch. That's like a heavyweight fighting a flyweight. It's a mismatch. You and the devil are a mismatch. But the problem is you don't know that. And because you don't know what you are as good as a flyweight, you don't know that one of your punches can flatten this guy. So you don't even bother to swing. And he's having a failed day. The day you wake up, the church is like a sleeping giant. The day we wake up, he'll be running. Now I mentioned the imagination, the power of the imagination, how the negative imagination can really work against you. The stories that we've been telling each other, the horror movies, the news media, all sorts of things. They've become strongholds in our minds and they work against us. So even though we think we believe the power of God inside of us, actually, when it comes to it, those stories wore against, against the word of God and make the word to be of no effect. Another factor, we don't understand our identity. I'm not even talking about the power at work inside of us. Pardon me. I'm talking about your identity in Christ, just knowing who you are. The fact that you've been translated from one kingdom to another, you've been given a new citizenship, a new passport, you don't belong here anymore. He doesn't have any jurisdiction over you. Israel is quite a unique nation. If an Israeli does something wrong in another country and he, you know, goes back to his country and then, you know, this, this other country say, "Oh, we want you to repatriate him here because, you know, he's the," they are not even going to listen to you. They protect their people. You have been taken out of the kingdom of darkness. You used to be there. You used to be a member, a citizen. You were a deacon in the devil's church. Then you got saved and you were transported and put in the kingdom of light. Problem is you don't believe that you are in the kingdom of light. You think this guy still has jurisdiction where you are. No. There is a big ravine between where you are and where he is. But as long as you believe that he has got some long-range missiles and he can hit you here, all he has to do is give you bad dreams. All he has to do is give you some nightmares. And you will believe you are under attack. You remember the Syrians who heard some noises of hoofs and they concluded the Egyptians were coming to attack them? That's what's been happening to many people. You have some few bad dreams, "I am under attack." The devil wants you to believe that you are under attack. And as long as you believe you are under attack, it's won. He knows he doesn't have any missiles that can reach you, but his lies can reach you. And if he can get you to believe that you are under attack, you will limit yourself. You will develop symptoms. I know people that believe they are under attack, they are believers. And they have all sorts of manifestations. If they could take the word of God and believe it, they will be set free instantly. I know the story of a lady who used to be troubled by all sorts of, you know, demonic dreams. She couldn't sleep. The story of another man, a rich guy, invited this preacher to come and stay in his house. And but he himself went to sleep in some corner somewhere on the floor. He said each time he sleeps in his bed, demons come to attack him. Say if these demons had the power that this man was attributing, why would they only trouble you in your sleep? Why would they just slay you, finish you off? The devil wants you to think that he's more powerful than he is. He wants you to think he's got long-range missiles that can reach you. It's a lie. He uses trickery. He uses lies. That is his most powerful weapon. Remember this, in the Garden of Eden, all he could do was lie to Eve. Nothing more. He could not make Eve eat their fruit. He only had to lie. Remember that. That is true today. His biggest, most effective weapon is trickery. He has to lie to you. And once he's lied to you, you will do the work yourself. Before we go further, let's quickly go through this. This is an important caveat. Not everything that happens to you in your life has been caused by the devil. Period. Not everything that happens, anything bad I'm talking about, has been caused by the devil. Do you know why bad things happen? Because we live in a fallen world. God warned Adam, "Don't eat this fruit. If you eat it, there's going to be trouble." He didn't know what was coming because he thought, "Knowledge, haha, what can be that bad about it?" But today, knowledge to create a bomb, knowledge to, to know how to ambush somebody, knowledge how to destroy someone else's life, that's all knowledge. This is where we are. So bad things happen because we live in a fallen world. You cook nice dish, you put it there in a warm climate, you come back a couple, a few hours later, it's gone off, you can't eat it anymore. Who did it? The bacteria that caused that food to spoil, they didn't come from outside though, they were in the food already. So things will happen. We live in an imperfect world, things will happen. Not everything that happens to you has been orchestrated, designed by the devil specifically because of you to attack you. No, you are not that important. My sound offensive to you, but I find it a relief that I'm not that important that he should be staying up all night to devise something to attack me. I'm not that important. Jesus is. So because not everything has been caused by the devil, it is refreshing that when there's a problem, we can pause and reflect. Why did it happen? Is there something we can learn from it? You see, as soon as you attribute everything to the devil, all learning ceases. What is there to learn? It's for the devil. Let's pray. That's why there's a lot of prayer going on on our continent because we don't dig deep to discover why something happened. We have our ready explanation. It's the devil. Then prayer meetings multiply. But the same problems, if they happen in another part of the world, they would just try and find out what went wrong and try and solve it. So if we attribute things to the devil all the time, then that's what's going to happen. We are going to be passive. We're not going to be seeking solutions. We're going to be doing a lot of praying. But it's not going to be effective prayer. The Bible says, "The effectual, passionate prayer of the righteous avails much." But it has to be factual, it has to be effective. It's not just any prayer that avails much. It's not just wasting time, wasting God's time. That's not what avails much. Effective prayer, when you know your authority, when you know exactly who you are, when you know exactly what God has done for you, when you know the limitations placed on the devil, you can now pray, a targeted prayer, dealing with the situation as it is. Because sometimes all you need is, "God, I need wisdom in this situation. God give me wisdom." A brother was just about to pray for his son, who had, his son was just doing some somersaults in front of some girls. He wanted to impress them. And they're just a kid. And as he was doing one of those somersaults, he didn't learn very well. He broke his ankle or arm or something. I think it was his arm. He broke his arm. So they called this man of God. He came with the father and he was about to do what he normally does. When things like that happen, he holds the thing, he puts it in place, he prays in Jesus' name and, you know, God's healing power begins to work and then, you know, people are healed. So he thought he was going to do the same thing. Holy Spirit told him, "Don't touch it." "Don't touch the boy's arm." And he had to listen for instruction. Eventually he went to hospital. They discovered there was a very complicated fracture that, you know, he could have caused damage to nerves. He was going to set the bone, you know, and actually, he set the fracture, but actually, he could have ended up damaging blood vessels and nerves and things like that. Sometimes what you need is just wisdom. That's all, wisdom. Not hours of, "God, this, God, this casting this," wisdom. Sometimes in setting somebody free from the influence of the devil, do you know what you need? Wisdom. So that the person can shut the door. The door that the devil went in through. The door that they opened to the devil, they just shut that door, like Jesus said to them, "Then you go and sin no more." He shut the door, the devil doesn't have anywhere to go anymore. You know, so sometimes that's all that is required. Because we always imagine that somebody being demonized or being possessed, always, we always think that it means that they are resident there. The demons are there constantly. There might be cases like that where they are there. But often all it is is that they are being tormented. They are being tormented. And if they discover certain truths and they shut the door, Bible says, "Resist the devil and he will flee from you." He goes. Where else is he going to look for someone else to bother? The Bible says, "He is like a roaring lion, seeking," he goes about seeking whom to devour. Do you know why he seeks whom to devour? Because he can't just devour anybody. He has to look carefully to see whom to devour, just like a predator when he sees a head of wildebeest grazing. He looks for the weakest one to, to, to attack. He won't go for the alpha male whom I decide to give him a fight. That's what the devil does. He looks for whom to devour. So if we teach people how to shut the door to the devil, we put them in a much better place. Not only will they be set free there and then, but also for the future. Okay, so now let's go through this slide just to cover some basics. The truth about Satan and demons. Satan is a created being. And the passage we're going to be looking at is from Ezekiel chapter 28. So, "You were the seal of perfection, full of wisdom and perfect in beauty. You were in Eden, the garden of God. Every precious stone was your covering, the sardias, topas and diamonds, beryl, onyx and jasper, sapphire, turquoise and emerald with gold. The workmanship of your timbrels and pipes was prepared for you on the day you were created." So he was created. Now this passage, when you read it in Ezekiel, it seems to be talking about a king of Ty. But actually, when you look, you see that the things are being said and cannot apply to a human being. And that is to happen, you know, in the Old Testament prophecies, you see that the prophet starts talking about something and then suddenly something else slips in. It's like the Holy Spirit suddenly gives them the ability to talk about something else that they would not have understood. They didn't have the knowledge. If they had the theology about the devil, this prophecy would have been much clearer. But you've got to remember that there were limitations placed on, or rather, these Old Testament prophets were working with some limitations. They didn't have the knowledge. They didn't know what they were prophesying about. So sometimes all they could do is give a description like this without giving you the proper context. Because where, where were they going to get context from? They didn't know. So the guy sets off talking about Ty, king of Ty, and then suddenly invites himself talking about a different being, but he has no idea who that person is. And then it takes future generation with all the knowledge that they've accrued to go back and interpret, which is what we're doing. Now that we know what we know about the devil, we can look back and say, "No, this is really not described." Because it says, "You were in Eden." A king of Ty was not in Eden. Only Adam and Eve were in Eden and the devil was there. "The Satan was cast out of heaven," when they say, "it says, 'You were the anointed cherub who covers. I established you. You were on the holy mountain of God. You walked back and forth in the midst of the fiery stones. You were perfect in your days from the day you were created. So iniquity was found in you. By the abundance of your trading, you became filled with violence within and you sent. Therefore I cast you as a profane thing out of the mountain of God and I destroyed the old covering cherub from the midst of the fiery stones.'" Again, it is clear that it's not, it's an anointed cherub. That's an angel. It's not talking about a human being. So he's talking about a fallen angel. And who is that number one fallen angel that we know of? It's the devil. Satan isn't the opposite of God. Sometimes you come across all sorts of myths where people make it look like Satan is the opposite of God. And sometimes in Muslim Christian circles, they magnify Satan so much that it's like the opposite of God. It's almost like the two are engaged in battle. Come on, come on. Even you, with Christ in you, if you were to engage in a devil, a battle with the devil, if you knew your identity, it would be a mismatch. How much more God? How much more? The Bible says, "The heavens of the," you know, they fit into his palm. How can, how can, if we read the Bible, we discover very carefully, we will discover very clearly, at the end of the age, one angel will be sent to bind the devil. One, one angel, just one. We have been, we have been magnifying him too much. One angel will just... The devil wanted to take Moses's body. For what? I don't know. But when Moses died, the devil wanted to take Moses's body. And we know about this in the letter, Jude's letter, that's the last, the penultimate book of the Bible, the letter according to Jude. And then he talks about it. There was a battle between the devil and Michael. Michael just rebuked him. That was it. That was it. That was, the battle was over. He rebuked him. Why do we magnify this guy? You know, people have gone into battles with him and they've won. Why do we magnify him? Because we are not relying on the word of God. Our attitude towards the devil is not even formed by the Bible. It's coming from some other source. Satan isn't omnipotent. The devil and his demons have limited capability on earth. Now, does he have any power at all? Because if we say, you know, he's got limited capability, etc., does he have any power at all? Things are a bit dark here. Let me just turn on the light quickly. So is he, does he have any powers? You know, because there are things in the Bible that suggest that this person, the devil, has got some power. For example, this passage in John, from John says, "Now is the judgment of this world. Now shall the prince of this world be cast out." Here he's called a prince, the prince of this world. There's another passage here. There's another passage here, wherein. In time past, ye walked according to the course of this world, according to the prince of the power of the air. The spirit that now worketh in children of disobedience. So here he's referred to as the prince of the power of the air. So he's a prince. Okay. How much power does Satan have? If, if he's a prince, then how much power does he have? In fact, there's another place where, um, I think Paul wrote, eh, about devil referring him as the god of this world. So he's been referred to as a prince and, and as a god with eh, eh, with lowercase, you know, G. Let's read this little passage here. This passage, you know, we're breaking right into the temptations of Jesus on, you know, the mount of temptation. And the devil taking him up into a high mountain showed unto him all the kingdoms of the world in the moment of time. And the devil said unto him, all this power I will give thee. And the glory of them, for that is delivered, for that is delivered unto me and to whosoever I will give it. I have a question for you guys. Was the devil telling the truth? Did he have all this power and the glory of these kingdoms? And could he actually give them to anybody? Let's open this. I want, I want to get some responses from you guys. So, you know, just a simple yes or no will suffice, you know, what do you think, Sue? Sue, are you, are you?
I don't, no, no.
You don't think the devil was telling the truth?
No.
Why not?
Because he's known to be full of lies.
That's a very good one. Okay, guys are very good, but let's, let's, let's see what other people have to say. Fred, what do you think? Abba, what do you think?
Hello.
Oh, hello, hello, Fred.
Yeah, uh huh. Um, the question was, was Satan lying when he said the king, he would give the whole world to blah, blah, all those things? Yeah, he wasn't lying.
Okay.
I think, one, he was dealing with Jesus who knows all truth.
Okay.
Secondly, to the Bible refers to him as the god of this world.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you very much. Now let's see, we'll, we'll get some other responses. Um, Bishop. What do you think? Do you think he was lying or was he, he was telling the truth?
If he had all the power, why, why would he be here? What, what is he doing here? Because he says, all this power. No, he, he, no, no, no. He doesn't have that power, so it's no.
Okay, so you don't think he has the power? Or he had the power that he was bragging about? Good. So I, I'm really glad that we are getting different views, because it's important, this, you know, we, let's not give the politically correct answer. What we think other people want to hear. Say what you actually believe, because you know, that's, we really want to get to the bottom of this whole issue. Um, Crazy, what do you think? Fred?
Thank you, um. If I'm going by what I believe, which is the word. Jesus says something, he said, all power. Now, if someone has all power, let's say I'm contesting with you. In the arena of, you know, authority, and you come in, you said, I have all power. Then it suggests that I don't have any. Compared to you. He didn't say I have much power. He said, all power has been given to me. So then the other, the party has none within the word of God. So we will ask the question, what then does he use to operate? He dwells on the ignorance of men. And that is what the Bible stays categorically. He didn't say that Satan has certain amount of power. And God has that amount of power. Eh, I like it when you stated that, eh, I think the challenge has always been with the church. We magnify him so much that he's competing with God. That is what the church preaches. So, eh, yeah, he has no power. As far as what Jesus said is true.
Yeah, amen, amen. So, um.
Um, hello, sorry, let me clarify something eh.
Yeah.
So I mean, I meant the system, the, the way the world behaves. He's managed to deceive a lot of people to his side. So Christ was in the world, but the world hated him and it would hate his followers too. Because Satan is actually the god of the system of this world. But I, when it comes to real authority and power, I thought that undisputed is for God.
Amen, amen. So I like the clarity. I think between, between, eh, you know, all of you, you've brought clarity to the issue. And this is really what the problem in the church is. We haven't really brought cl- clarity to this, this ma- matter. We are swinging between extremes. So there are some who believe that, ah, Satan should be ignored, there's not, you know, eh, that, you know. They, they don't even want to consider that he has any influence at all. And then there are others who just magnify him. But like Fred you said, he's the god of the systems in this world. Why? Because the people of this world, as I said, the children of disobedience, he's operating in them. And as he's, as they give themselves over to him, he has influence. But he only has all the influence that you give him. So when he said, all this power I will give to thee, there was some truth in it in the sense that he could. There were people, there are people there whom he could whisper into. Herod was one of them. You know, there are people that, that he could, he could whisper into their ears and they would go and do something on his behalf. So he had power, he had, but he didn't have it in the sense that he, he owned the world. The Bible says, the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, and the people, they all belong to God, doesn't belong to the devil. So he didn't have it in his possession such that he could hand over to Jesus. He would need the cooperation of people for it to happen. But yes, he knew how to trick people, to whisper into people's ears, and that was what he was referring to as his power. Sue, you've got your hand raised.
Yeah, so, eh, eh, just so that I'm clear. The devil, eh, the power the devil has is as much as we give him, right?
Yes.
Okay, so once we are, eh, eh. We don't give him anything, then he has no power over us.
Yeah.
Or anything at all. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if you don't give him, the, the Bible talks about, don't give place to the devil. The Bible talks about it. So you give place, and there are so many ways we'll talk about it, that we open the door, literally. For him to enter and he comes in, you know, and then we have trouble and we don't understand. But there are things that we do that allow him access. Even then, it's not like he comes in and he does whatever he wants in your life. The degree to which you allow him, if you open the door in a particular area of your life, he will come and cause a mess there. Doesn't mean he's got access to the rest of your life. And that's how we need to understand. He has, he's so restricted. He is so restricted. Just us in the church would be magnifying him. I want to do the opposite. I want to stress the fact that he is restricted, so that you start to believe that you can, that you can win against him. Because if you start, if you continue thinking that he is so powerful, you're not going to fight. You're not going to fight. But if you know that you've already won because Christ is in you, you will stand your ground and believe me. When a believer is in a spiritual battle, all he's doing is not punching, oh. No, 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 no. There are people punching. Go seven days fast, this is seven days fast for the devil. Why are you giving the devil attention? Oh, because Jesus said this kind, eh, comment not by, by, eh, fasting only. Let me tell you. If there's a demon that would not respond to the name of Jesus, your fasting will respond to your fasting either. What made you think that your fasting is more important than Jesus' name? These are some of the wrong doctrines that have just, and just gives the devil more and more power. It just magnifies him. Oh, now I'm getting them to starve, that, you know, they need to feed. No. The name above all names. They tremble at this name. You, you, don't you remember that Jesus stepped into a synagogue? And the di- he didn't open his mouth, the demons said, what, what have you got to do with us? Why have you come here? They know him. And he lives in you. That's why that demoniac said in a book of facts. All, I, Jesus, I know. All I know. But who are you? You see, if Jesus is inside you, he knows. The problem is you don't. And as long as you think that he, you know, Jesus is not here, that you have to call him down from heaven. He has a filled day. People who walk in victory, the difference between those of us that today victorious, tomorrow failure. The difference between us and those people that walk in victory consistently is what they know. It's not that they are special, it's what they know. And they believe, they believe in what God has done on the cross. You know, so when he said, all this power I give to you, huh, there was some truth in it, it's a grain of truth in it. But he didn't own the world. It wasn't the case of he has this in this locker, he can just come and give it to you, no. He would still have to get people to cooperate with him to be able to give it. Okay, so why did Satan get his powerful? Well, in the beginning, God gave man authority over the earth. God said, let us make man in our image according to our likeness and let them have dominion. So God's idea was that man will be the absolute ruler of the earth, of course, under God. But man would be the authority on earth. But listen to this, authority must be exercised. Just because you've been given authority doesn't mean that. You can, that you have dominion. You have to exercise it. Years ago, I came across a concept of absentee leadership. I don't know if you've, you've come across this concept before, but let's say you have a leader at work, he's your boss. On paper, he's your boss. But when it comes to any difficult decisions, he dodges the bullet and gets someone else to do it. They are leader in name only. But when it comes to actually standing there being counted, they are not. Such a leader is not exercising the authority. And do you know what happens with such leadership, such absentee leadership? Some people. Whom this person is supposed to be leading, who are more assertive, they will take over. Soon you begin to have pseudo leaders under this leader. The, the authority that God gave to Adam and Eve, it needed to be exercised. But then they were listening to the devil in the first place. And what the devil say? Has God said that you can't eat off? All the fruits of the garden? And Ivan said, no, no, he didn't say that. He just said, we can eat everything, my brother, it's just this, this fruit. The devil says, no, 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 it's not like that. Have you noticed that, pardon me, people who seem to have information that you don't have? That you tend to look at them with some respect? That you tend to look at them in awe, because they know something that you don't know. This is what was going on there. A guy comes and says, let me give you the secret, ka, 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 ka. Did you know that this is like that? He said, eh, that's what was going on. So, the person that was supposed to be giving instructions, exercising authority. Was not taking ideas from someone who was supposed to exercise authority over. And through that process, they sinned, and therefore they relinquished the authority. The Bible says that wh- whoever you submit to, you, you become that person's servant. Romans chapter six. If you submit to sin, you become a servant of sin, if you submit to righteousness, you know, become a servant of righteousness. It's, it's in Romans chapter six. By listening to the devil, they submitted to him. In other words, it's like. You are the boss. You, you seem to know better here. I mean, we, we are in a territory where we, we, we don't know, we don't know, God didn't give this as, this secret to us. It looks like you know more than we do. The person that knows more than you is going to lead you, whether you like it or not. And that's how they handed over authority to him. But once sin had entered the world, corruption had entered the world. Well, things just took a natural turn for the worse and he has been having a filled day since then. But always remember, whatever he does, it's because people let him. It's not bec- bec- because Adam believed, you know, relinquished the authority. It doesn't mean that he now has absolute power over people. No, he doesn't. Do you remember the, the, the story of the demoniac of the gatherings? When Jesus crossed over, crossed the sea of Galilee onto the other side, and this man met him. And he was possessed, you know, and when they asked his name, you know, he said legion because he had, you know, the legion of demons inside him. The demons begged. It's this, these things we read and we just ignore them, you know, it's like, oh, eh, the demons came out. No, listen, the Bible says the demons begged. They were begging. So who was in charge? These things that we fear, they were begging to be allowed. To enter pigs. Because without a body. They have nothing. I like the way one preacher put, she said that even, eh, eh, even a worm has more authority than the devil in the land of the living, because a worm has a body. God has put limitations on spirits. That's why they look for people to possess or animals in this particular case. Because without that, they are floating about. There's nothing they can do. They must, they have to whisper ideas trickery into people. In order that people may pick up their ideas and work with them. They are limited. Remember that, they are limited, were reduced to begging. Okay, so the passage that we see, you know, you quoted. The all authority in heaven and on earth has been given to me, therefore go and make disciples of all nations, Jesus told. His disciples in Matthew chapter twenty eight verses eighteen to nineteen. That statement shows that authority had been lost, not in heaven but on earth. It had been lost. So Jesus had regained it. Now, there's a difference between power and authority. Power being the force that makes things happen, authority being the right that's been given. What Adam relinquished is his position. So it was authority. He didn't pass on any specific power to the devil, it's authority. Because he didn't lead. He gave room to the devil, and that's what he is using. Devil hasn't received any special additional powers. All he's operating on is on what you believe he has. If you believe that he's big. That's what he's going to, you're going to get. If you believe he's small, that's what you're going to get. Satan's powers are limited. Okay, I think I've explained this already. I've also explained that human free will restricts what Satan can do. And the passage eh, here is from Genesis, chapter four, verses six and seven. This is breaking right into the discourse between God and Cain. After Cain's offering had been rejected. God asked, why are you angry? And why has your countenance fallen? If you do well, will you not be accepted? And if you do not do well, sin lies at the door and its desire is for you, but you should rule over it. Now, sin lies at the door is really another way of saying the devil is lurking outside. Waiting for an opportunity to get hold of you. But you shall rule over it. We're not talking about some righteous man, oh. We're not talking about some holy man, oh, this is Cain. This is Cain, and God said you shall rule over it. So even Cain had authority, even after the fall. It's not like he, so when we, we talk about Adam ceding his authority, ceding his place to the devil. Opening the door to the devil, it doesn't mean that he lost everything. No. He still has free will. He still had free will. Cain had free will. And as long as Cain had free will and he was willing to exercise it. God said, rule over it. Of course, we know what happened. He did not rule over it. Next day, God protects his children, and I quoted this earlier from the book of Job, Job chapter one, verses nine to eleven. So Satan answered the Lord and said, this eh, we are breaking right into a discourse between God and the devil in Job chapter one. So Satan answered the Lord and said, does Job fear God for nothing? You have not made a, ha- have you not made a hedge around him, around his household and around all that he has on every side? You have blessed the work of his hands and his possessions have increased in the land. But now stretch your hand and touch all that he has and he will surely curse you to your face. So the devil had been going around and he had noted Job. So the devil had been going around and he had noted Job. And when he noted Job, what did he note? He also noted that man was enjoying protection. And we explained that this, all this happened before the new covenant. Then, then the new covenant with Jesus, he's actually inside of you. So guess how much protection you and I have? Next passing. This one is from Luke, chapter twenty two, verses thirty one and thirty two. It says, Simon, Simon, behold, Satan demanded to have you, that he might sift you like wheat. But I have prayed for you that your faith may not fail. And when you have turned again, strengthen your brethren, your brothers. Look at what this, you know, ju- ju- just take note of what the devil was saying here, or rather what Jesus was saying here. This was just before Jesus, before, um, can't get my words right. This was just before Peter denied Jesus three times. And remember that Peter had argued that even if all the others departed from Jesus, that he would be, you know, set for us, he would remain with Jesus. And Jesus said, you know what? He has demanded to have you. There's a preaching by, um, I think it was Miles Monroe on this topic, you know, this particular topic. Of all the people that, you know, who have preached about, I think, I think that what he has to say is, it's, for me, it's the, is the, is the, is revelatory and it's, it's the one that brings out the meaning of this passage. It talks about how that there are certain things that you should not say, that you're, by the words of your mouth, that you are ensnared. You know, there are some, Jesus said, let your yes be yes and let your no be no. In John, I think it was John, chapter twelve, a time came when the, the, the Pharisees were pushing Jesus. Were saying lots of things, pushing him. The Bible says, when he noticed that he withdrew and he stopped talking. Why? Because this, this, this thing here that we've got, it can get us into trouble. And by the words of your mouth, you are snared, you might say something beyond what your faith can access. You can say something beyond what you are able to do. Here, Peter said, even if all of them run away, be, be, I say that Jesus. Peter, Peter, what have you done? The devil has been looking for an opportunity to deal with you because he can see that you are close to me. He can see that I've got destiny for your life. So he's been looking for an opportunity to deal with you. And now you, you open your mouth to make this statement. Guess where the temptation is going to come from? It's going to come within this particular area that you say that if all of them run away, the devil has got an opportunity. So it's not surprising that he betrayed Jesus. Betrayed, denied Jesus three times. He said, me? I never, never, never knew this guy. And then afterwards, he was crying. He was broken by that whole experience because he just saw it. But the point I really wanted to make is that the devil demanded. He was not at liberty to just go and touch Peter. He was not just at liberty to just go and do whatever he wanted with Peter. He was asking for permission. Can I deal with this? Can I deal with this guy? Satan works through trickery and deception. Let's go through this line. Since Satan's power is limited, he resorts to trickery. The idea is to get man to cooperate with him. Now, the serpent was more crafty than any other beast of the field that the Lord God had made. That's Genesis three, one. And Ephesians, chapter six, verse eleven, it says, put on the, put on all the armor that God gives you. So that you'll be able to stand up against the devil's evil tricks. In the old King James, he says, the wiles of the devil, but that's all it is to do with, the tricks. So the guy's a trickster. That's how he does. That's how he rules. He tricks you. He wants you to believe he's bigger than he is. Okay, I don't think we'll be able to finish this whole topic today. Um, it's, it's long. So we're going to probably pause here and take some questions. Um, contributions. If anybody has, wants clarification on, on any of the things that have been said so far, please feel free to voice them. But I thought, you know, time has passed, so let's, um, pause here. We can complete this next, next time. So any questions?
Thank you so much for the word, and I've been so blessed by it, especially. Um, Matthew four, nine says that if you worship me, Satan always tricks us to bow to him, so he can have access. So we have to be careful how we bow to certain things, because it's going to control us. Will take over us. Immediately we bow to him, it will take control of us. So we have to be cautious. And be on the guy for the things that Satan will use against us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. And what I also say is, um, in addition to that, is that the devil, because he wants us to think he's bigger than he actually is, sometimes in the, we can become too cautious because we are so wary of his tricks. But God wants us to be filled with boldness, the boldness that comes through the knowledge that we have been redeemed, that we've been transported, taken out of his kingdom. That he doesn't have any long missiles that can reach us where we are, that it is because of deception that we think he is with us. And yes, I agree with you on, you know, saying that, that we don't bow to him. We don't bow to him in the sense that we don't buy into his lies, that we don't frustrate the word of God that says, look, you are safe. That we don't frustrate the word of God. And that we also remember that not every bad thing that happens in life has been orchestrated by the devil. Some, a lot of it is just because we live in a fallen world. Thank you very much for that. Um, Arba, you've got your hand raised.
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, um, thank you for today's, I've been enjoying it.
Good.
I want, you said that, um, probably we'll go into, you know, things that we do that give way for the devil to operate off.
Yes.
Demons, yeah. I know maybe you, you'll talk about it later.
Yes, yes.
But this, um, deliverances in churches, like, you know, casting out of demons in churches, i- is it real? Because, you know, many a times, like, I've, I've observed this in church, in my own church, like, uh, a someone, a pastor will come, deliver one particular person. Uh, next, another one will come, deliver the same person. I, I don't understand. And you know, sometimes, I don't know if I really remember the drama in all of this. I remember we went to one church, a one professor, that demon in the person, that is, I assume, I don't know if it's real. Said, what, said, I'll say this in just a, so far we took a year, fetching of being him. I don't remember if, I, I don't know if I really remember. Demon saying this. And, you know, from hindsight, I, I'm thinking that it's all drama. I don't know if it's real. I, I don't know. But why is it that if it's real, why is it that one person will be delivered over and over again? Is it that the pastor is not powerful or is not, you know, applying the right prayer? I don't know, like, but, uh, I'll be very much interested to know the things we do that can open the door, so.
Yeah, yeah, oh, definitely, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that, you know, in the next, next session. But yes, you're right. It's, it's a very good question that you're asking about, these multiple deliverances of the same people. And if, if you really cast out a demon from somebody, Jesus didn't go back to cast demons from the same person again and again. It's quite clear that, you know, this is, some of it is just drama. It is all it is just drama. Why? Because the devil himself is a dramatist. He's a dramatist. He likes attention. You know, when, and we didn't get a chance to read those passages, but when Jesus cast demons out of people, sometimes he had to warn the demon not to hurt the person before they came out, or you had to warn them to come out quietly, rebuke them first to be quiet and then to come out. Why? Because the devil always wants to do some show. So, you know, you, you're trying to pray for somebody who's supposed to have a demon and then the person starts turning around and do, what's that all about? Just drama, just drama. And I don't know in the specific instances what happens there. Whether, you know, maybe this person actually never gets delivered and then they come back with their demons. Or some of it is just, you know, some of these people themselves also like drama. So they will perform and the pastor, and the pastors will like that because the more they perform, the more the pastor's clout goes up, you know? Imagine that you pray for somebody to, for, you know, for, try to cast a demon out of somebody. And you just pray, lay your hands on that person and walk away. Nothing, no show, no drama. People are going to say, ah, where is the anointed? But if they start manifesting a heart, and so it's a whole deception where the devil now gets to be, to play a key role at the delivering service, making a show for everybody. And people think the power of God is moving, when actually the person in charge is the devil, creating a whole scenario, spectacle for everybody. Through casting out of demons, reopen the Bible. Jesus commanded them to go quietly, not to hurt the person. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll come, we'll come back to that definitely. Thank you. Okay, um, any, anymore before we close? Any questions or contributions? Kukua and Rita.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Yeah, God bless you so much, man of God.
God bless you too, sister.
Yeah, I, I was saying that if I don't know anything at all about the devil, with what I have heard today, I don't think I would want to, uh, magnify the devil for any reason.
Amen.
At all, yeah.
Amen, amen.
I'm so blessed.
Amen, amen. You know, we, we, we sometimes make God too small in our own eyes and make the devil big. And that just frustrates our prayers because we pray and we don't even feel relieved. We don't know whether we've been, you know, that, that God has heard us or not, because the, we, the, the obstacle in front of us is so big. But, you know, it's time to minimize him, put him in his place, so that, you know, we can magnify God and then we can stand in our victory. Amen, amen. Any others?
Yeah, good evening.
Oh, good evening, Rita. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Good.
Okay, yeah, right. Um, God bless you once again.
Thank you.
And, yeah, this topic is, I believe it's, it's very, very important. Uh, I was glad when I saw it's pertaining to what we are discussing today. Because I believe that it's a battle or a struggle for us as believers and, and, and what we've been made to believe. And as such, I, I just want to say that, um, um, what from today, what I've come to understand is, we, understanding the word as to knowledge we say is power. So our word base or what we need to do, as you've already said this, to go by the word, go for the word, understand what place or what he's giving to us, the authority is given to us. And what we can do to overcome the power of the enemy or what we think the devil has over us. So I'm just saying that I'm waiting for more in, as the week goes by. And then I believe that, um, by the end of this whole session, we will have that kind of authority, understand it very well, and it will really help us. So God bless you.
Amen.
God bless you.
Amen, God bless you too. Amen, good. So you all have a blessed rest of the week and weekend, and then I'll see you on Wednesday at seven P M, uh, GMT. God bless you all. Bye.